Welcome, everybody, calling the meeting for December 5th, 2024 to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, all directors are present except for Director Verberg, who is absent with prior approval.
Prior notice.
Prior notice. And as well as our state board reps, Hal Tucker and Nancy Atten. Moving on to the agenda, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
A second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? State board reps, all in favor, say aye.
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 Everybody else say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. A motion carried by voice vote. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Vander Yott for all lots of good news.
Lots of good news, picked out a few things. First one is that all three elementary schools held their final mile on the Marathon Club program on November 2nd at Linden High School, the Linden High School track, capping off a complete marathon run over the course of the fall. The final event, the final mile event, brought together students from all three elementary schools and families to complete their last mile of the marathon and celebrate together. It had become a pretty strong tradition in the Vander Yott family and many families that, whose students have attended Linden Schools, have participated in the final mile. It is often a very cold, wet evening, but it is one of great joy. So it was a good celebration. We were out of town, but I think Linden families are pretty happy. Danny, you had a child, if I remember right?
Yeah, he ran two, so he was very excited to participate.
Lot of feet.
Yeah, lot of feet.
Kyle? Still have your feet?
Oh, I don't know where those were. But I saw his son's feet and there were so many, like whole necklaces. I was like, okay.
He likes to flex.
Yeah, I love the final mile. Nice flex. Well, Linden Middle School hosted a free community event viewing of Screenagers, growing up in the digital age. I will say only about 15 community members. It is difficult to get community members to attend these events as we all know they're really important. But I, my hope is that even a small number of attendees see some value as we can help parents and educators work with kids to help them achieve a healthy amount of screen time. Also, Linden Middle School, eighth grade students' leadership class walked to Vospek Elementary twice per week to visit their buddies in second grade. The students read books, make connections throughout the trimester. This is a highlight of the week for both sets of students. And I just added one note here, the middle school is also beginning a food drive that has been in place, boy, I think since the 90s. And they always do a tremendous amount of collection. And that's going on. And I hear Ashley smiling, laughing over there. You remember the food drives?
No, I do, but for Linden High School's food drive, I brought in like 500 items.
Oh, congratulations. Yeah, thanks for doing that. And then skip down a couple, the Special Education Department hosted an event on November 21st with the Arc of Wachem County, the Developmental Disabilities Administration, the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation with those two groups. This event connected families with key community resources for post-high school supports. Other Wachem County school districts also participated. And so lots of good news. And this little stretch between Thanksgiving and the Christmas break is also a time when there's a lot of, a lot of great things happening. Is there a band concert tonight? I'm not sure. I think, I think that there is a high school band concert very soon.
Moving on to meeting minutes. Any corrections to the minutes? Is that on your packet? If not, I want a change in motion.
I think a motion to approve the minutes is written.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion, questions? Student advisor votes. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll pose. Motion carried by voice vote. Moving on to annual organizational meeting discussion on number five. Page 10. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the next president to serve one year term. I would like to nominate Mr. Ken Owlsley.
I'd like to make a nomination for Jim Verberg.
So Mr. Verberg has indicated that he would be open to serving in positions of officer. And so we have two nominations for president. Director Owlsley would need to accept nomination for president. And then presidents are awarded with a roll call vote. And so then during your roll call, you would say which, which director you'd elect to serve. That's how that, how that, that works.
So what I just said, all in favor?
So then it's a roll call vote, starting with Director Martina. Or first we gotta know if.
Yeah, I'll accept.
Yeah, accept. So then calling for a motion to.
I'll call for a motion to accept Ken Owlsley.
I would say nominations for Director Owlsley and for Director Verberg.
I'll accept a roll call vote for president.
A nomination for, for both.
Nomination, okay, for both.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Can I second? Can I second?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll second. So we're, so this is for president, right? Okay, so discussion, made discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, Director Martina.
Hang on.
Yeah, if, I, I, I think that, I just want to say for me, as, as one of the directors, I think it would be regardless of if we put Director Owlsley or not on the, as president, my, my vote would be, and we're not there yet, but for vice president, I think that it would be nice to have that experience on there. So regardless of if you get it on or not, that would be where my, my thought would be, so.
So either the position of president or.
President or vice president, yes.
Those nominations will come next.
Yes, which will be next.
Okay, anything from you, Director Bar?
Like to take a minute more, just to kind of process both.
We're talking Robert Schur's orders. I think we got it. So roll call vote for president, are you?
Well, she's thinking.
Oh.
Give her enough time to think.
Confusing.
So there's just two nominations left, Director Bar.
I know. All right.
Okay, roll call vote. Am I just saying, asking?
Just Director Martinez.
Director Martinez, who are you voting for?
Uh, for Director Verberg.
Director Verberg, okay. Director Bar.
Director Verberg.
Owlsley, Director Owlsley?
I'll vote for myself.
Okay. And me, I'm gonna go and vote for Director Owlsley. So it's a.
So I would say you are gonna stay in the president's chair for this meeting. We did not have a successful vote for, for president.
Can we vote for vice president?
We could, I would recommend maybe not doing that.
All right.
I think that maybe have that discussion.
Monkey wrench.
I think, I think, I think the, I think waiting on the, the whole knowing who the president is may help make a clear nomination for the vice president.
All right.
But that's, that's your call.
I'm, I'm, I'm good to get through this meeting if we're good to just hold off until the next go.
I think that'd be best.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, consent agenda, including AP payroll for November 15th to 27th, as well as personal recommendations for today's date, as well as donations from Cooper Northwest on page 15. Call it, set the, a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a simple question. The donation says donation to the Linden chapter, uh, is that BLIA?
FBLA.
Oh, FBLA, okay.
FBLA. Future Business Leaders of America.
Now, now, now it makes sense.
Yep.
Sorry, I was looking, I missed the F.
It's all right.
I have a question for the resignation for the assistant coach for girls' basketball.
What page, Director Bar?
Oh, that's page 14 for the staff. Since when was, Ms. Jennifer was an employee? Do you, any idea?
I would not have that information.
Is Molly now? No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm also aye. Okay, information from the audience, there's none? Okay, moving right along to reports.
Kyle?
Q and A.
Okay. The TV. Cindy and. Billy, are you introducing them?
This is a presentation.
Yeah. Just go to the game, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Hey. Good evening, I'm Vince Rickman, Principal at Linden Middle School.
I'm Cindy Selko, Assistant Principal.
We're excited to share with you guys our improvement journey and hopefully you'll see a connection with the strategic plan, improvement efforts all across the district, and our efforts from previous years. As a reminder for you, all of our work is grounded in service to students in relationship to our mission and vision as a school district. All students being career and college ready and citizenship ready and high-quality instruction for every student, every day in every classroom. This graphic I've, I've shared with the board over the last couple of years and it really kind of guides what our work is about. It embodies the MTSS model and the UDL model. And we're really focusing in on tier one throughout our building and the universal supports having both been our behavior model and our academic model. So our first goal from the strategic plan is centered specifically on the universal design for learning. Our goal at Linden Middle School, attached to effective core instruction, is to increase staff knowledge and application of the UDL framework. And specifically, we're gonna measure that through some staff perceptual surveys. Starting from last winter throughout the spring and this fall and all the school year, we've taken a deep dive into UDL. Our progress thus far has been pretty exciting. Last spring, our building leadership team decided to read the book, UDL Now. And through that process and our partnership with Cassie Stevens, an ESD PD coordinator, she really kind of led a lot of professional development. And our goal with that process was to not only build the capacity of our leadership team, but to also build their application. And so several of our leadership team members have really taken a step forward and lead learning by partnering with Cassie to share some lesson plan work and coordinate lessons utilizing the UDL framework. And in doing so, we're hoping that they can in turn help lead staff in their, their UDL journey as well. Also, kind of the, another overarching goal that's across all the district's leadership teams is to come up with an identified list of what are the non-negotiable instructional strategies that are 100% accessible and 80% successful with staff. And so when we started to wrestle with that this last summer, one of the important things we wanted to do is not identify that list just based on our very small amount, knowledge of UDL, but we wanted to increase our knowledge of UDL before we made this, this journey. And so the book and our time with Cassie Stevens has really started to help us. So we've not been in a hurry to try to identify this list yet. We are just now starting to have conversations around a couple of items that that would be on that list. And our goal is by the end of the school year to have a, a solid list of non-negotiable, non-negotiable instructional strategies that are 100% accessible and 80% successful.
The next area of focus is based on our strategic priority number two, around effective core instruction. And specifically, core instruction to meet the needs of all learners. When we talk about tier one, if you want to go to the next slide. So our current state shows that our multilingual students are struggling or to progress in their language development of the English language. Specifically for the middle school, it's showing that they're getting stopped in reading and writing. But what we do know about our focus area has, we've decided to be, is on speaking. And the reason why we're choosing speaking is because we know that speaking is how we process reading, discussing what we read and understanding those things. And we also believe that if students can, if we can teach students more about how to speak academically, that we'll start to see that in their writing. And so that's why we've made that an area of focus for this year. This is our current data where our students are at. So the low proficiency means that 80%, 88%, for example, for seventh grade of students have, have not achieved the proficiency that they need at the speaking standard according to the WIDA assessment. The next slide.
So they call it low proficiency and high proficiency?
Yeah, so we want them to move to high proficiency. So that's our goal, is that we want them to move by one level of proficiency. So, and again, why speaking? Molly had shared with us at the beginning, well, actually last summer, this quote from James, is it Bitten?
Yeah.
That literacy floats on a sea of talk. So the way that we talk is how we process and how, and how we write. So it's super important for us to focus on strategies for structured academic dialogue in our classrooms.
One quick question.
Yeah.
When you, you mentioned the levels of speaking going up one or more. Is that based on that WIDA chart?
Yeah.
That just up one level depending on where they land?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Our students are doing really well in the listening area. And a lot of our students are doing, are doing okay in speaking, but they're still not progressing in the reading and writing. But we think focusing on speaking school-wide will improve everyone's reading comprehension and writing. Yeah, let's go on to the next slide, okay. So some of the things that we are starting to do right now in order to address this school is that we've been trying to explicitly model strategies for effective student discourse by showing our teachers how to use sentence stems. For example, I have a bunch of sentence stems in here. Like if I was in a reading and writing classroom and I wanted my students to talk about cause and effect or whatever, then I might provide some sentence frames that would lead them to discuss. Like when the book said blank, I was thinking it, it might have been caused by blank because blank. So just like giving a, like sentence starters for students as a talking point and to lead them in the right direction. Another strategy we've been modeling is word banks. So if we want students to use specific vocabulary when they speak, having those words listed on the board or on a poster. So like if we were talking about supporting an author's claim or something, then some of the words I might expect to hear them say is that this, that the author is arguing or the author is listing, or the author is citing, or the author is illustrating. So giving them those prompts and expecting them to use them. Those are some of the strategies we've been modeling. We also have a building-wide focus on the criterion two, which is about student talk. So when we've been observing in classrooms, we've been giving feedback specifically on what students are saying and then looking at it together with teachers for the quality of the student talk. So is the quality more of a, just a basic level one? Or are we looking at something that's more analytical and applying what we've learned? And then talking about how we get to that level of understanding. And then finally, one of the things that we are learning is very important or that we know is important is the student experience in our school. And so we have, we have plans to monitor the student experience, like an interview certain students to see what their experience is like. Do they have opportunities to speak? Do they feel safe to speak out in class? One thing that we did at the beginning of the year is we invited students to come before school started to share their school experiences and what they were looking forward to and what they are worried about. And that was very enlightening and helpful for our staff. It gave us purpose and meaning because it helped us remember why we are here and who we are here for.
Quick question on that. How do you address maybe certain barriers to students who don't have the ability to come ahead of time? To, to, because you said that you had those opportunities for kids before school, right?
Right, well, we invited some students that had signed up that, who had wanted to be leaders in the school. And so we reached out to them during the summer and asked them if they wanted to come. So we didn't invite the whole school. It wasn't like an open invitation for everyone.
And how will you, you had mentioned that you're gonna, you want to do kind of a survey. What's your methodology for that?
Yeah, we've been thinking about that. We, we were thinking about maybe some kind of anonymous form through forums. But then we really wanted, one of our, one of my personal goals is really thinking about a group of ML students that I would like to monitor. And so I was thinking about just maybe meeting with them individually and asking them a few questions about what their experience at school is like.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah.
Danny, when you ask that question about how do we get students to come in? When students came in for the school prep day to pick up their schedules, one of our goals, like this is the picture of that day. And so this is the first day back with staff and you can see a student there. Students are each one, at each one of the tables. Our goal was to make that a very diverse group of students so that our staff was insured, be sure to hear from our whole population. And, and so we checked every box to make sure that all those voices were heard. And then you could kind of see the picture there. They had a series of questions to ask the kids. And so it was, it was very powerful and we got a lot of great feedback from staff about having their voices elevated, having them present in terms of launching our school year. And it kind of goes along, it goes totally along with our theme and our improvement effort as to raising student voice.
Okay, thank you.
Our last improvement goal is related to strategic priority number one, safe and supportive learning environments and specifically MTSS. And we're continuing our, so if you go back to the graphic of the house in the tier one, on one side of the house is behavior and on the other side of the house is academics. We're in our second year of our PBIS implementation. And so we're continuing that effort. But before you can move on to tier two and three, you've got to make sure that tier one is all set. Many of the issues you have related to behavior and social emotional needs and school STEM at tier two and three, and we really want to get in a hurry to fix that. But you cannot fix that until you're successful at tier one. And success at tier one means 100% access and implementation from the adults in the learning community and the students in the learning community with 80% success. We have a PBIS team led by Mrs. Selko and our dean, Mrs. Long. And we use a fidelity inventory, inventory system to ensure that's being done with success.
What's PBIS, sorry?
Positive Behavior Intervention Systems.
Oh, okay.
Nope. Yeah, there's, if you're interested, there's lots of information about it on our website.
Okay.
That's all the signs that you guys have on.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, being explicit about the expectations every, for every part of the building and aligning how we implement those expectations with our students.
Cool. It's UDL and MTSS.
Yeah.
In action. So our progress toward that goal, last year at this point, we had 209 referrals as of this point last, this year we have 167, although a little bit higher after today. And so.
So it is the fifth, not the first.
Yes, but yeah, that's true, that's according to the fifth. But what's exciting from a, a tier perspective is that 95% of our student body has only zero or one referral. And so that, that's powerful. And so that, it's clearly pointing to us that the issues we're dealing with are tier two and three issues, but we're not quite ready to attack those yet. We've got to make sure that we have this all firmed up. So we're, we're proud of, proud of that. We continue to work systemically as an administrative counseling team. We meet every week and we painstakingly pour over the big three that is, you know, grades, discipline, and attendance information and do our best to systemically address students that are having issues in that, in those areas.
We also understand that the social, emotional component is essential to student success as well. And so we monitor this monthly too. And this is part of what we're working on. We know that students who feel connected do better in school. And so that's why we monitor this. If you look, from left to right, it goes from September to November. The top circles are, the blue is showing that this is the percentage of students that have, that have a person that they can name that they feel comfortable going to for support. And so we see it's, it's slowly increasing and so we're happy about that. But we are working towards knowing who those students are by name that feel like they don't have someone that they can connect with and, and thinking of ways that we can get them connected. The bottom circles are about the counselor. If you would like us to, if you would like the counselor to check in with you, let us know. And so you can see that most of the students aren't feeling the need to check in with their counselor, but there are a few. And we pass those names on to the counselors and they meet with them right away.
This is of the 548 responses or 528, is that right?
Yeah, and so you'll notice, I mean, we do have over 700 students in our school, but yet we're only seeing 500 or so responses. So that is an area of improvement is we want all students to, to fill out the survey so we can help them, but, but not all students choose to. Even though we do give time during the day in their classroom to do it, not all students are feeling the need to communicate that way with us.
I can't imagine. Yes, I can't imagine. Of all the data, that's important data, it's just, you could fill the room with important data about student achievement and students. But this to us is the most important data. Connected student is a successful student. And so monitoring student connections is something that's a priority for us. So with that, this is not a new mascot. We're still the Linden Middle School Alliance, but ducks have inhabited our campus. Which is really fun.
Very interesting.
But not for the grass. Questions?
I have questions. So you guys were talking about multilingual learners having struggles and, you know, what they're facing as far as, not as much in speaking, but in, in writing and reading, I believe, right? So I can relate to that, yeah. It's just, I can't, as a somebody who's multilingual, I can't get mad in English. It has to be Punjabi. I don't know how to like, yeah. So I just usually, let's say it's confrontational kind of a dialogue. Just, it doesn't come out. So I can definitely relate to that, having that bank of words, you know? Because we don't use Punjabi in like, unless I'm outside in a professional setting or like your students, it would be in the school, which is also a professional setting. Or, you know, they would use English only when, let's say they're in cafeteria, they're, you know, talking, but not as much as, you know, you would use if it was your first language and your only language. So I definitely can relate to what you're saying there. I had a question about, do they, do children use like, is it called Chat GTP? Do they ever use that for writing or AI?
Well, I think some students have experimented with it in ways that maybe they hadn't learned yet how to use it correctly. So I mean, it is an area that we're looking at and how, like we've, we plan to have some training on about how to use that and how we teach our students how to use Chat GTP. I mean, I'm learning it myself right now.
I, trust me, I, I just heard the term and I thought.
Or GPT, okay.
Or GPT, there you go. So you see, I don't even know the whole acronym.
I think it's about like knowing what questions to ask and narrowing down like what it is. I don't know. It reminds me a lot of our Avid strategy for narrowing down the point of confusion. You know what I'm talking about? It reminds me a lot of our Avid strategy for, um, narrowing down the point of confusion. You know what I'm talking about, Ashley? I think that's what G T P is, or what is it? G P T. Am I saying it right? Okay.
I gotta correct it.
Is like.
Call it A I just all.
Okay, asking A I what it is and just till you get the answer that you want. And I think it's a valuable skill to have, like.
There's other resources for students, whether students are M L or on an I E P, that support them in the writing and reading process. And so, um, but the reason why we put that quote up there is because when students take the weighted assessment, part of getting to the high fluency component. Is you gotta be able to speak on a topic for sixty seconds, which is difficult. And so that, that demonstrates that level of fluency. And so that's why we're bringing that goal together into supporting, you know, students and their, your speaking abilities. But part of doing that, one of a very common instructional strategy is, hey, turn and talk about, you know, Y equals M X plus B. Or the claim in so and such and such story. That's not gonna help this, this student. What would help that student is, you know, with a, a sentence frame to start that off and three words to choose from a word bank. And then partner A do that first and now partner B tell me what they said. A structured dialogue that has an on-ramp for success is what's gonna help that student. So that's, that's the kinda structured professional development and targeted, um, modeling that we've been doing for our staff. Both with Melissa Valley, you guys had a long time with her. And Cindy and myself and also with, uh, in the U E L framework that support that kind of instruction in the classroom.
Right, right. Anyhow, I was just curious about technology. I'm more of a person of moderation. So, yeah, that's why I asked. Um, okay. And then the other thing, um, we've had a lot of presentations about. Multilingual students and I think it's safe to say that it was kind of like one of those highlights that we've had this year. Personally speaking, we've had a lot of those meetings. When we serve, is it, is it kinda true to say when we serve multilingual students in English Language and Arts? We serve all, right? It's kinda like a U D L thing also where those services are not, you know, exclusively benefiting this one group. Rather it, you know, the other techniques that are in U D L are actually benefiting other students as well that are struggling in E L A or something. Is that?
Absolutely. And I think, um, some of the things that I've learned is that all, that we're all language learners. When it comes to a specific content area, I don't know all the, I don't remember all the vocabulary necessarily from science. But there's vocabulary there that I need to practice or need help with. So like all those types of things that we do to like scaffold for, um, multilingual learners are, help everyone.
Great teachings, great teaching. Here, here's an example for you. So Ken saw this today. He was at, at our school today. We were in a, a language arts classroom and that's tier one. And in that classroom, there was U D L strategies taking place in that classroom. In that classroom, there were M L students, but there were also students on I E P and students with all kinds of needs across the learning spectrum. A period later, we went to an E L D class, an English Language Development class. That multi-grade class was a tier three intervention for kids. But that class came after kids had tier one universal, okay? And in that class, we were using an Imagine Learning software, which is specifically targeted for M L supportive students. And that's where you saw the para working with kids and the E L L teacher working with those kids. That came in addition to their tier one regular language arts course.
Gotcha. Same set of students that are, that were in the tier one, uh, that also.
Not necessarily, because that, that particular E L D course, that's an amazing class. I would encourage you to check it out sometime. Cause it serves all three grades at the same time. And, um, but no, those students earlier in their day had a language arts class.
Okay, gotcha. Which was tier one, in, under the tier.
Ding ding, there you go.
Gotcha. Now, um, question. The M L population that we have is the highest is Hispanic. And out of curi- curiosity, I would like to know, how many teachers do we have in the middle school that are Hispanic or Spanish speaking?
Um, okay, wait, let me go through the roster in my head. Um, this is not exactly perfect, but I would say, I wouldn't say teachers, I'll just say staff. We have.
We have the number of.
Yeah, we do. Um.
Follow up with you too.
Yeah, that's true. I'll just follow.
It's not a quiz, it's not a quiz show.
Yeah, okay. But I, cause I can get it for you.
You get accurate information.
Yeah, 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 I'll get it to you.
Cause that's one of those, um, very important pieces as we focus on that M L. That I don't think I've had the chance to look at that data yet. So that would be interesting to know how many, um, uh, Spanish speaking teachers we have. In elementary, high school, middle school and all of that stuff. So maybe you can add the other schools to that one. Be good. Thank you. Um, my third question would be for this, uh, school, um, your, your survey about, let's see. Well, okay, never mind. I'm gonna skip that one. Is there a student body in middle school as well, just like in high school?
Like an A S, uh, yes, we have student body officers. Mm-hmm. We have, and yeah, we have student representatives. We meet monthly.
Okay, cool. And then last but not the least. Have you, have you guys ever had like any, I mean, this is kinda given or maybe not? Cause people born here don't, maybe don't relate to it. I relate to it. Seasonal depression. Cause I've, I've heard, um, Superintendent David say that also many times when we, we were, uh, doing the tours, you know, there was a rainy morning. And, uh, teachers and us, I mean, student spirits could be down just because of, you know, how the season is. When you do your, um, surveys, um, so there was one, the other, okay, the circle thingies were different. There was another type of survey that you guys talked about. What was that? Remind me again?
Student learning experience?
Learning.
I talked about how I'd like to meet with, um, students, uh, to talk about how they're experiencing learning. Like, how do they, how many opportunities do they have to speak in class? Do they feel comfortable speaking in front of their peer? You know, those kinds of things.
Okay, then that has nothing to do with weather. Never mind. I'll just skip on that question. That's all I had. Thank you.
You sure it was me?
Oh, yeah, I've heard, I heard it from you, yeah. Yeah.
We all need vitamin D.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give, uh, an encouragement. I, I appreciate your presentation. In May of, in May of this year, uh, I have on my notes that, um, that question, that one right there, uh, the top one. If needed, is there a staff person you feel comfortable going to for support? Um, your number was twenty-four percent at the end of that year. And right now it's at eighteen, looks like it's hovered at twenty-two. So that's, I mean, as of right now, six percent increase doesn't, may not seem like a lot, but that's great. So I know that seems like that's, you, you said that that's the most important component for, um, most important data point. So. I would agree. I think it's great. So, good job.
Ashley, can I, do you guys have anything?
I don't think so, but I just wanna touch on something about, you guys said something with like, um, sentence stems and classes. And I think that's, that's really important because it gets like the brain thinking. And like even now, like with like author's purpose, cause I think you said something about like authors and stuff. It just helps a lot. Like understand what you're reading more. And so I think that's really important to implement it in middle school. Cause I don't, like, I was there for like two weeks and it was like really hard for English and stuff. But that's awesome to be implemented in the.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Yeah, middle school's hard. So I appreciate you guys putting this effort in to make sure the students feel like they're safe at school. And that they feel like they have someone to come to if they feel like they need to be checked in on. So, thank you. Middle school's not easy at all.
One of the questions in our, that we ask kids in the P B I S survey is where do you feel safe and where do you feel unsafe? And then we, that's an area that we target in terms of support for kids. That's really, that's very, very important feedback.
That's what got me through middle school, having teachers and staff.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you, the data that's behind these charts, do you have the demographics on this data? And then, so the, the real question is, do you understand, do you know, uh, how many people? How many students maybe who are M L students who didn't respond? Like, do they represent a, a large percentage of the non respondents? Do you know?
We don't, we have the, at the classroom level, so it could be like a first period class. And, uh, we would have to narrow it down to that classroom. So we don't have it at the exact, we know which student that identified. That said, hey, I do wanna see that counselor, but we're not, we're not able, at the granular level of knowing that out of these ten kids in this row. These two kids didn't answer the question. We've been asking ourselves about that, cause we're concerned that that number's not closer to seven hundred. Despite all the reminders we put out there. So in terms of the demographic piece, we do not have that.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Anything else?
I remember Principal Freeman had led the high school on this activity where every student was listed on the paper and the board. And then teachers went by and made a checkmark if they had can, felt a connection to that student. So another way of kinda reverse engineering it of, of the students, which one do stu, do, do not have checkmarks by them, by any of our. You know, our staff. And, cause middle school kids can get pretty good at making sure that adults aren't checking on them.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I have been stopped by these ducks quite a few times. Are they here to stay or are they gonna go south? I think they finally left. They, but they've been making a mess.
Forgot about that.
Thanks for guys.
Thank you.
You're up, Mr. Thomas.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Um, before I jump in, do you have any questions since you've had the packet for a few days here? And thanks for the call today. It was nice to chat with you a little bit.
Thank you.
Um, so first one, you had a couple of things in your packet. We'll cover the one, forgive me. Can't see the page numbers very well. Page nineteen, the budget calendar here. I made a couple of notes since some of you are new to this side of the process, this area in here. So the purpose of what we're doing here is to have a structured, sound and materially accurate budget for you folks when we get to August of twenty-five. So that when you're adopting the budget, you can see we've come up with a plan to be sound and what we're presenting to you. The plan that I would just mention, so, um, is to have some, some benchmark dates and documentation to deliver some designated. Um, outcomes to you. One example, hopefully next month we'll present our initial enrollment projection. That'd be one of the first things we would do. Um, we'd probably also give you an idea of our fund balance, where we think we're gonna land in twenty, at the end of twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's the purpose in the plan. The biggest part, though frankly, is, um, preparing the numbers for you. So Suzie Greddon and I do a lot of work and Molly, working on coming up with our personnel projections. That's the biggest part of our budget with eighty-two percent of our costs going to staff. So we have a plan to have those numbers completed by mid-March to late March. That's usually our goal. And selfishly speaking, it's probably our goal for Molly especially, we're starting bargaining with two groups in probably March or April.
Can you tell me that number one more time? Did you say eighty-two?
About eighty-two percent.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so the purpose of that is to obviously have a system in place that when we get numbers to you, we've had some process of how we did that. Um, so this entire document, um, I doubt if you're familiar with construction, but it's kind of a backfilled document. So at the bottom is just simple things and then there's detail all the way until we get to the top, which is presenting to you an adopted, or proposed budget for adoption. So this is our plan. You two have seen this before, but it's just a roadmap to get numbers to you all that we feel good with. And just for your knowledge, it encompasses all funds. So we have the general fund, capital, debt service, A S B and the transportation fund. And we're required as a first-class school district to have everything ready for the public to see on July tenth. Um, we did that last year. I think everyone's familiar with that one, but we did do that. Our goal is used to have it ready by mid-June so that we're not scrambling at the last minute to get a number out to people. Any questions on that one? Okay. Um, on this next one, we're gonna focus on pages, forgive me, some notes here, pages twenty-one and twenty-two of your packet. Um, last month, we did go through the budget status type pages, but I don't think they're, not that they're not relevant, but they're just, they're just numbers frankly. I think the bigger part to share with you right now is kinda where we're at in terms of enrollment and our fund balance. So in terms of enrollment right now, we are about sixty-four to sixty-five students above budget, which is reasonable. It's nice. A couple of years ago, when I first arrived with the district, we were at a hundred and ten above budget, which is a little too much frankly. That's, that's being too conservative. So David's taught me well to be more moderately conservative and we're at that point right now. Um, of those sixty-four to sixty-five F T, twenty-six of those are in our schools excluding the Linden Academy. Um, we have, we're about five students above at Linden Academy. And then our running start re-engagement students were about thirty-four F T above budget. So, um, the reason I'm bringing those up in the way I just did, the running start and re-engagement is really money in, money out. So it won't be anymore, it'll be more revenue, but be more expense as well. We only get to retain about seven percent of the revenues that go with that. So overall, we're about thirty-one kids above budget. That's positive for the district as a whole. But we're serving sixty-four, sixty-five more students than we did a year ago, than we planned on. Um, in terms of fund balance, if you look on page, I guess, forgive me, is that twenty-one, this page? Um, it shows that we have a fund balance of seven million, two hundred and two thousand dollars in the general fund right now. Um, we budgeted to finish the year at, at the end of next year, five million, seven seventy-nine. Please keep in mind the seven million, two oh two. That number is typically going to be high in October, November, April and May. And that's tied to our tax collections that we collect. Those are four months we type, collect a lot of taxes. So don't be surprised when you see the number higher than budget during those periods of times. And in February and June, the opposite occurs. We're usually below budget because we're living off of those tax collections. So the state catches us back up. They have a weird funding structure because we get money ahead from our taxpayers. So they not penalize us, but they short us revenue for a few months to live off of those revenues. That's pretty much all I had. Just, oh, one last thing. We always do the projection, David and I do for you. We'll save that for January, once we know what the state, what our enrollment is funded upon from the state of Washington. We, we live off of what we budgeted for from September through December from the state of Washington. In terms of what they fund us for, I should say, so.
There's no significant level of cost for running start student, is there? I mean, so there's no real financial detriment to passing those.
Like you said, it's a pass-through for us. It's just money, money out.
But the cost as well, right? Cause you're not spending any, really any significant dollars on that student.
The only thing I could think of is we do buy laptops for each student. So that'd be the only cost I could think of.
For running start students.
Yeah. Most of them have one-to-ones too.
There is some counseling requirements with the running start.
Yeah, it's like five minutes.
Unless you're Gwen.
Yep.
It's more time than that.
This is me dating myself. I didn't know that you guys got laptops for running start students. How long has that been? Is that since twenty?
During COVID.
Yeah.
And then, cause we weren't a one-to-one district, we had plans to go there. COVID enhanced that, that timeline. And so once we became one-to-one, then we, we offer it to families.
And this is theirs to keep?
No, no, we, so go ahead.
For, for learning purposes while they're students, similar to our, similar to our.
And do those have similar types of restrictions that the ones?
They're the same stu, they're the same laptops that our students are, that are checked out to.
Cool, okay, thank you.
And so not all running start families check one out, but that's available for them.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I think we keep seven percent, do we? Is it about seven percent?
Yeah. So if we generate a hundred thousand dollars, we keep seven thousand of it. Not trying to hurry through it, but they're just, this is kind of a generic kinda month frankly.
Thank you, Ben.
We'll save for, uh, the, the finance committee reports when we shut up.
Okay.
Finance committee.
Yeah, so we met on, uh, I met with Jim and Danny, Director Burburg and Director Martinez on, uh, November eighteenth. And, uh, Director, or, uh, Ben joined us as well. We reviewed kinda similar information that we, um, talked about just now. But then we discussed later in the, uh, later in the, the board agenda, uh, resolution of some transfers. And so Director Martinez, um, not sure if you're prepared to share.
Yeah, I can.
Around that discussion.
That's a little bit. So we, we talked about the transfer funds from general fund to capital funds projects. Um, just for some various things, there's this, there's a list of different projects that could be completed. And one of the most notable ones in my mind is, is, uh, Judson, uh, just needing to i- invest in that now. So that we don't have to keep paying for STEAM and it, it pays for itself within five years. So, um, I think we, I've written here that we, uh, we, uh, invested. We're looking at investing about a hundred and fifty thousand in that. And so. and fifty thousand in that. And so within five years, that should pay itself off. So that's kind of a necessary thing. Just a lot of different things. One of the things I took from that was that some of the things on the list may or may not get done. It just kind of depends. But it all seemed very reasonable for projects that we need done around the various schools.
I'd be happy to just verbalize the list if you want me to verbalize the list. That's, that's kind of generated, that's helped generate our, our kind of amount. And again, appreciate Director Martinez saying that you go out and you get quotes, you look at the different costs, and you have to make adjustments because you may not be able to do them all. And so with the facilities, it's the Judson Hall, H-back, as Director Martinez talked about. Looking to add early childhood playground additions to our elementary schools now that we serve four-year-olds and also here at Main Street Campus. And then we have the track, Linden High School, Linden Middle School track. And looking to resurface that area so that we don't have to limit activities for our students over the next few years until we're able to, to pass the bond. And then another, you know, two hundred and twenty-five thousand to expand the safety. Part of it's a response to the Safety and Security Task Force. And two of those key ones were the, the upgrades to the access controls at each of our schools. Purchasing some software, updating, keeping track of who's coming in, coming out of, of our, our buildings, and then expanding the exterior surveillance across of all of our district schools and traffic and pedestrian improvements where we've identified some of those needs. And then the other one would be in, and though again, this will be in the resolution, but then the other one will be within the technology. And then we do have all those one-to-one devices. They came online out one time. We have a replacement schedule that we believe we have to begin implementing or all of those costs will come at once. And so we, we believe it's prudent to, to start that. And then upgrading the Linden Academy classrooms with instructional technology that's at the same level as, as the classrooms across the district. So that, that is kind of the, the list that helped generate the amount that we felt was important to transfer from general fund to capital funds.
About the security measures for the high school. So this isn't something, is this, this is going to take, this is something that, that's going to happen in two months or three months or something like that? Is, do you have an idea on the timeline?
The external surveillance is maybe already happening, but it, it can, it would happen in a, in a reasonable timeline and upgrades to our access control. I think we're in the process of working on those, those quotes.
Because you've been looking at this thing, security cameras and whatnot for a while, right?
Correct, yeah.
So you're somewhat down the, down the road on it?
Yeah, we're somewhat down the road. The, the reason, and they're allowable to pay out a general fund. The, the, the reason we're looking to transfer into capital funds because of appropriate expenditure. And then it can show that, that we're, you know, we're investing in capital funds to extend life and efficiencies. And, and we feel like we need to operate that way rather than having general fund and then putting all those funds into the, the services. We have to create a balance with, with maintenance and capital investments as well.
Okay. The reason I ask that is, oh, go ahead.
No, I just, I think I may have added more on than, than Director Ausley needed is yes, we've been working on these things for a while.
The reason I mentioned those is because I kind of went ahead online today and, you know, looked at all of the prefiled bills that are coming up for the upcoming session, legislative session. And if there's not two, I think there's three, two or three, that are actually targeted at enhancing school security. So those are, you know, grants, more funds to come in. It's SB five zero zero three and SB five zero zero four. Those two are the sure ones that I know. And there's another one actually, HB one zero one one. And I thought, you know, everything that you just kind of enumerated as far as cameras, fencing, crosswalks, not sure about crosswalks, so that's a question mark. But all of that, you know, uh, security, I remember, what is it called? Wattcom one? Where we, we want to have that system where, yeah.
Oh, Wattcom.
Oh, Wattcom, okay. Sorry. You know, how to, if they're, you know, allocating funds towards that and whatnot. All of that is targeted by these three bills. So it'd be nice to see what comes out of it. These are grants from OSPI that's going to come. So, I mean, it's not going to come, depending on how the session goes. So just wanted to share that one. That's why, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come back up in a bit.
You are just stay in the seats, so that's fine.
Can I give this on to Director Ausley?
Yep.
All right. So just this superintendent evaluation committee, Director Ausley had created the evaluation process with Director Castani. And for tonight's discussion, I'm going to let him take away his little cheat sheet thing for you. What's that?
Yeah, so each of you have a doc, have the document that Director Ausley's updated. And he is probably prepared to be able to process through it a little bit.
Yeah, sure. I mean, to, to, not to contradict, but this, this process was, was crafted as a result of a meeting between the three of us based upon the, based upon the contract and superintendent's contract and the dates specified there. So this was just to put together a timeline to make sure that it's clear to everybody sort of when things need to happen and, and what should happen. So I put together basically, or we, we put together a series of meetings that are listed here. Today is the first one. So we're, we're actually doing part of that right now, which is the, in open, open meeting, the board will review and discuss the evaluation process and timeline and review and discuss the evaluation framework, which is this.
Which is the one you're studying.
This, right. I'll, I'll touch on that in a second. Then later to the, tonight, we'll, we'll go on to executive session and, and discuss components of the work of the superintendent as, as they relate to the, the performance evaluation. And then sometime in May, we'll have another meeting in, in executive session. This will be the time when you can provide input on the, you can provide input on the actual, actual performance evaluation, the scoring sheets that we did last time. And you'll, you'll note that at that time, we'll also have the opportunity to speak privately without the superintendent, should that be necessary. And then we'll, we'll actually receive input on that scoring. And then a third meeting in May, again, the evaluation committee will meet and actually complete the formal evaluation form. And then sometime in early June, ask for the contract with the superintendent. We will, we will actually meet with the superintendent. The evaluation committee will meet with the superintendent and deliver a signed evaluation form. I put a few notes here related to the, what the statutes that cover the superintendent evaluation. There, there isn't a ton of information. There's, the boards are actually giving quite a bit of leeway about how they conduct this evaluation. There's a very specific mention of personnel evaluation in the OPMA law. And then there's a little bit of prescriptive guidance for, for the elements of the evaluation, which are those eight ones that are, that are listed on the back page. Those eight, you'll find them, although there's eight standards on this evaluation framework, they don't match one-to-one. Each one of these sort of criteria that are listed in the relevant statute are, are found within, sometimes within multiple standards on this form. So anyway, so that's the, that's, that's the deal there. So that's that, that's, that's the process and the dates or the, or the meetings that we'll, we'll have. And then I think we wanted to talk a little bit about the, the framework, if you had any questions. This framework was presented to us from WASDA. Director, former Director Castani and I spent some time on it. We removed, we didn't remove any of the standards. We did change some of the language in the standards, the titles of the standards. And we removed some of the themes. I can't remember what exactly we changed. It was a handful of things. But, but that's, that's the framework. So anyway.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
And this is what we'll use later on as well at the executive session. Is that right? Okay.
Okay, on to action item, approval of the student, of school improvement plans on page twenty seven.
Yes, right here.
Motion?
Entertain a motion to approve the student, the school improvement plans as discussed, both for all schools, including these, Bosbeck Elementary, Fisher Elementary, ISM Elementary, Linden Middle School, as well as Linden High School and Linden Academy.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor of AI?
Aye.
Aye.
Student, advise yourself.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Let's go for it. No discussion. Moving right along.
Oh, I have a question for SIPs. Since I'm new on the board and I would like to know, since when was SIP a requirement of the OSPI? Does anyone remember?
Don't remember.
Has it been here for a long time?
Been a long time, yes.
Okay, so it's not a new thing?
Not a new thing.
Okay.
Also new guy question.
Yep.
How often do we do this? Is this once a year that we approve these?
Annually. School improvement plans need to be approved by the.
So the last year, when we were here, December, oh.
December fourteenth.
Yeah. And then we had a lot of those SIPs, I remember, presentations. Did we approve any or we didn't need to?
We did. We did the same process. I'm not sure which month. You may be remembering the second rounds of S student improvement, school improvement planning reports where we update the data in the spring.
But we were here for the December ones too, right?
We were here in December, we had Rex present. And I'd have to look through my notes to see who else presented.
Yeah, so they were either approved in Jan-, December or January last year.
Yeah, they were a little delayed last year. Remember, right?
Yeah. Interesting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a follow-up on when school improvement plan approvals?
No, no, no. I'll take your word for that.
Okay, okay.
I have mommy brain, so maybe I'm just not remembering it. Oh.
No, I meant when the state required it.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna, yeah. Um, yeah.
We'll follow up.
Well, no, never mind. It's been a lot of years. Everybody's saying that, so I'm good. But I do have a question about that OSPI thing. So it says OSPI requires every school to create and implement a school improvement plan, right? And then we must approve it. Does it also get reported in any way to SPI or how does that work?
So if a school is in improvement, there are things through the Washington School Improvement Framework and a portion of that called OSSI. And those portions we do need to be turning in to the appropriate organization and team that's actually oversees that process of OSSI. But just the general school improvement plans that we have, they stay in house. If we're audited, they might ask to see them, but they really are just sort of here within our system. There, I don't need to submit them anywhere to Olympia or anything like that. But if the school is in improvement, then there are some things, because there's additional money that comes along with that. And so there are specific like forms that need to be filled out and data that needs to be kept and updated and all of that. So in that case, yes, we turn that in.
Okay.
There's also a thing called a consolidated program review that happens in the state every, so often, which they ask just a ton of, of questions and artifacts and evidence. And likely, they would ask, what date were school improvement plans approved by the, the school board? And we would either upload them, the minutes that, that showed the approval of the school improvement plans. That's another way it can happen in terms of accountability through OSPI.
Oh, I see. So is Linden School District right now in improvement, like an improvement school?
So by this year, we do have Fishers exiting. And so there are specific sub-populations or sub-pops, as it's sometimes called, where students who are underperforming, it's generally those traditionally marginalized students, students who receive services in special education and those who are multi-able learners. So we are working specifically, and again, there's generally dollars that are attached to that to get additional support for students in those sub-populations in order to bring the data up. Fisher has exited. And so we do have a couple of sub-populations at BBE as well this year. And so we're just working through that process. Fisher will be completely exited next year. We're hoping the following year, BBE will be exited. So it's good work. It's absolutely good work. And really important to be thinking in advance. And if you notice, you're hearing that in our current school improvement plans, how are we supporting our multi-able learners? Because we understand this is not a Linden thing or a Washington thing or even a United States thing. And this is a real thing where students who are in those categories generally are underperforming. They're either typically developing peers or they're students for whom English is the first language. If we were in France, it would be students for whom French is the first language. There's just always a little bit of a, an additional hill to climb if you're a multi-able learner. Absolutely.
Okay. So this is if you can answer to it, a school goes into improvement based on, is it S-BUS? Or how did, how does OSPI determine a school is an improvement?
Yeah, I think what I'd like Director Barr is for Tim to speak more specifically to this because he would be able to tell you about all of those cells and where it is exactly, what it is they're looking for.
Yeah.
If anybody else wants to chime in. Yeah, Tim, are I a better resource for you?
Okay.
I think we do have time together on January fourteenth with the Teaching and Learning Committee. So maybe we could talk about that at that meeting. That might be a good use of our time then.
Sure.
I actually had written that earlier, like maybe we talk about just SIP in general and OSSI process and all that.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
We like to get away from the language of an improvement. It's, you know, there's hard populations in different places across the state. And so then additional resources provided to be able to meet those unique needs. We have a couple of those sub-populations. It is in the Washington State Improvement Framework, WISF. And that would be a journey for you to do some of the research. You can see the subgroups in WISF. And that is where they identify demographics that are not making adequate progress.
Gotcha.
So, yep.
Yeah, the whole, this whole SIP thing is a, I'm going to get there in the acronym. SIP thing is all, you know, for me, it's all new. So it's kind of helpful to have all of that context. Thank you.
It's the vehicle in which we're working towards this alignment of, of resources and professional development areas of focus. And so it's a, it's a useful tool for us.
Thank you.
Don't want to rush, but moving on to resolutions, twelve twenty-four and thirteen twenty-four, transfer of funds.
We're going to request that we take these separately, one at a time. And so if you want to read the, the title and then if anybody has any questions for myself or Ben, we'd be happy to answer them.
For the first one, resolution twelve twenty-four, transfer funds from general fund and capital projects fund to debt service fund. The debt service fund is the fund used to manage and pay for voted and non-voted debt. This resolution is in place to authorize transfer funds from the general fund to cover non-voted debt specific to the general fund for projects performed in twenty fifteen and interest on non-voted debt incurred in twenty twenty. The amount is two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. This resolution is in place to authorize transfer of funds from the capital project funds to cover non-voted debt principal specific to the capital projects fund in twenty twenty to access funds in advance of capital levy collections to accelerate projects such as ones discussed tonight in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve resolution number twelve dash twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, any questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Student advisor vote, sorry guys.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so passes with a voice vote. On to resolution thirteen twenty-four, general fund transferred to capital projects fund. The district's facility and technology levy is expiring or sunsetting December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Annually, the district has collected eight hundred thousand for this levy dedicated towards facility safety and technology. The district has a general plan of approximately nine hundred and seventy-five thousand in capital projects for extending the useful life of facilities, for implementation or upgrade of the safety equipment infrastructure and for ongoing technology needs for student and staff. The district's general fund concluded in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, the sufficient funds, with sufficient funds to support a transfer from, from the general funds to the capital project funds in the fall of twenty twenty-four, winter twenty-five, for the purposes noted above. I will entertain a motion to resolution thirteen twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution thirteen twenty-four.
Aye, second.
Motion made second. Any questions, discussion?
Uh, I just wanted, just for the record, uh, 'cause I know that sometimes we can get into discussions about buildings and facilities, that for the record, this is a plan, a general plan from the district to extend the usefulness of facilities. So in future, when we have those discussions, which will happen, about why didn't, why isn't the district taking care of the facilities? This is just one of many points we can go back to, to say, in fact, we're actually trying to do that. So, um, yeah, that's my two cents.
Yeah, uh, so I'm trying to remember. The tech levy is fifteen cents per thousand, right? Right, that's what that is. It was a little confusing the way that was written. I asked the superintendent this question, but I'll, I'll state it here, uh, since Ben's sitting here. It seemed, it, it sort of insinuates the way it's written, though I know this isn't correct, that the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the result of the levy because they're mentioned together. But that, that isn't the case, correct?
No, they're two separate.
You're just pointing out that the, that the levy is expiring.
And we have no resource moving forward.
And we have, okay, then that's the point of, of making that. There's no resource for technology, so that's why we want the debt. Okay. The only other thing I'll say is, as I mentioned to the superintendent, um, there has been a lot of focus on capital projects, the bond, et cetera. What I'd like, I know that there is a, there's a ceiling, a dollar value for when, when we spend money, that, that if it's above that, it comes to the board to approve the purchase order. But I would like some sort of prioritization plan and, and then just for the board perhaps to be, to be informed as these projects are, go, become underway and, and some level of status. So, you know, we've, we've gotten quotes for the, the cameras and it's gonna cost this much. And I don't expect, I don't expect anybody to, to produce any spreadsheet where all the stuff exactly adds up to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. But it would be nice for the board to be aware of the projects, the prioritization level as the money's being spent, even, even when we're spending under the threshold.
Yeah.
That would be helpful, I think, for the board. But other than that, I don't have any concerns.
And that'll be easy to do.
Yeah.
And then in year six, when we see all the positives for how much money we're saving from steam.
From over here.
Yeah.
Oh, um, so when we talked over, over the phone, um, did it get changed on the new copy?
Oh, thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
We'll have to make a, I made a error on the.
Page thirty-two.
On the resolution on, second paragraph on thirteen twenty-four, because I used, because I used the food service financial revenue resolution a month ago, I used the same resolution moving forward. I forgot to remove the word food. And so can we have them sign a cleaner version when I?
Yes.
Right now? Yes, I can.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I can do that.
One of us, one of us starts a vacation.
Go over certification. Okay, advisor vote, all in favor say aye.
I will go do that.
For passing. All in favor say aye for passing resolution thirteen twenty-four. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion created by a board member. First reading. Five.
You have five first readings. Uh, just a reminder that the intent of first readings is for the board to seek clarification, surface interests, communicate wonderings that may or may not include the need for guidance from legal counsel. A first reading also announces proposed changes to the public and subsequently provides an opportunity to receive public input for the district and for the district to conduct further study if needed, um, prior to a second reading. I'm comfortable if you are, um, uh, going through each of these. President Hickman?
Yeah, go ahead.
First one is, um, uh, policy thirty-two oh five, harassment of students prohibited. WASDA has updated policy thirty-two oh five, harassment of students prohibited following U.S. Department of Education's final rule on their Title IX. The new Title IX regulation became effective and enforceable on August first, twenty twenty-four. The new regulation and updated policy have been updated as follows. Expanded scope of sex-based discrimination in grievance processes, new definition of sexual harassment, limitations on the complaints and more latitude in the grievance process, and protections for pregnancy and related conditions. Additionally, the new regulation requires all employees to complete annual training and expands, uh, the training required. We have received this, um, update from WASDA earlier in September. Um, I just brought it to the, um, I brought it to Director Hickman and Owlsley, um, was, was maybe gonna wait a little bit to let some of the fluidity in, um, this federal regulation rulemaking settle a little bit before updating the policy. I don't think we're gonna see that happening anytime soon. And so my recommendation, um, to the board, not tonight, but my recommendation to the board is to update the policy so we have the updated policy in place with the new, aligned with the new rulemaking and then make adjustments as, uh, rulemaking changes go forward. We were able, Director Martinez and Director Barr were able to kind of, kind of hear a process of, of this development, um, uh, at the, at the WASDA conference. And, uh, there's, there's two policy, first reading policies that are aligned with, um, with the new rules, Title IX.
I might suggest, otherwise, I might suggest we wait till February to do a second reading on these policies and see what happens in late January, as I suspect those rules will be.
Yeah. I concur. And I'm not sure if, have, have you seen the list of, so, uh, Director Martinez was also at the pre-conference. The ruling from the Kansas court that has allowed members of Moms for Liberty, their children, in whichever school, um, they attend, to be part, it's kind of like a backdoor to a national injunction, to be part of that injunction. And there's a list that is, has been, you know, it, it usually gets updated two weeks, four weeks, um, once a month at least, uh, on that list. So as far as I, have you, have we checked that list?
I've checked the list regularly, yeah.
Okay. Because I, I just want to make it known that there might be changes in that. So far, there's one school, uh, but there, have it in good word that there will, there will be, uh, more that will be coming from Linden School Board. So how does that, um, you know, affect? Now, I don't know if this will warrant an executive session or not, um, but it's definitely a very, uh, a variable that needs to be taken into consideration, especially for these two policies. And like Ken said, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm okay also, uh, with waiting to see how, how the changes.
As well. We did adjust our, our procedures, kind of operating procedures to align with the twenty-twenty-four rules that went into effect in August.
Okay.
And then, and then the, the, the twenty-six states that are in the injunction and then the individual schools that may have a student that falls within the injunction, those students would follow the twenty-twenty rules.
Right.
And so, so there are some slight differences within the investigation of sexual harassment. We don't, we don't interpret them as, as real material in what we would do differently, in terms of protecting students from harassment.
Right.
So, so I, I'm, I'm very comfortable, um, delaying, um, you know, adoption of, of these updated, uh, policies.
And that would be policy five zero one one for the staff, very similar, almost the same language, and policy three two oh five for students.
We're still bound to, to follow the, the, the laws that are in place and, and through our investigations and provide the, the, the supports and the grievance processes. Those are all outlined for us.
Right.
But there's no elements of these policies that are, are being changed for reasons other than the Title IX rule changes. Is that correct?
Correct. When it affects in August twenty-four.
Yeah, I, I just think that the, the whole thing is gonna be rendered moot on January twenty-first probably, but we'll see.
I think what I would do is I would work with board counsel, uh, to, to kind of confirm that, make sure there's any liabilities of not, not adopting, updating policy related to those new rules. And, and work with them, work, work with, with, with the board counsel.
Yeah.
To determine whether or not that's.
Our new counsel.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yep, that's all I'll do.
As long as everybody else is fine with that.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yep. There's a lot of things in play with the injunction versus, you know, um, 'cause we heard that at the pre-conference law. That was a, I think it was Pacifica law advan- Pacifica advance, eh, something, um, that had that presentation at the last slide where they were saying that schools that are under that injunction will follow the twenty-twenty, um, regulation, so.
Both rules are intended to protect the harassment of.
Correct, yeah.
Students and staff, and we are continuing.
That will, yeah, that will, that will be there, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that will, uh, the protection will stay there. It's just a lot of play of, um, redefining words and, and interpretation of words, so, nobody's, I don't think anybody's against the protection, so.
So moving on to the first reading. So first reading for policy thirty-four twenty, anaphylaxis prevention and response.
WASDA's revised policy thirty-four twenty, anaphylactic prevention and response based on House Bill sixteen oh eight, expanding access to anaphylactic medications in schools. The legislation requires the Secretary of Health or secretaries designated to issue a statewide standing order prescribing epinephrine and the epinephrine auto-injectors to any school. And so a marked up version, uh, is provided. I do wanna make a note of error on the first reading document. Everywhere you see auto-injector, um, struck through, um, that should not be struck through. And so if you would, uh, we're not exactly sure how that error occurred, um, but second reading will have auto-injector, um, remaining. So again, first readings, any questions, clarifications, anything you'd like to see differently in language? We will take note of that and come back for second reading with responses to those things. This has gone through our nursing, um, staff and Mr. Metz.
I tried clicking on this blue link. It didn't work, the one on the, um, cover page?
Corresponding, corresponding procedure.
Yeah, yeah. And thank you for putting that in. I, I really appreciate it, but I don't think the link is working. So.
No, it just.
I can just go look for the policy, put a P after three four twenty, so I can do that, no worries.
All right, any other questions? First reading to policy, uh, fifty oh five, employment and volunteers disclosure certification requirements, insurance is in approval.
WASDA's revised policy five thousand five, employment volunteers, what she just said, and to provide definition and clarity around unsupervised access to children. And so you'll see that in the first reading where those, um, that statement has been included.
Any questions?
Would like to note that this is somewhat relating to this. In, in our discussion with the, in the finance meeting, we talked about, uh, for security, updating our check-in system as well. So that, that's, to be able to monitor where exactly someone goes. If I go to the school and I say I'm gonna go to the band room, but I'm off in the lunchroom, that's something that we would be able to monitor. So I think it's a great improvement, so.
So can I just skip over fifty, fifty low?
Yes.
Moving on to policy sixty-six hundred on transportation.
WASDA's revised policy, WASDA's revised policy sixty-six hundred, transportation based on Senate Bill fifty-eight nine one, protecting the safety and security of students and maintaining order within school buses by designating trespassing on a school bus as a criminal offense. The legislation creates the gross misdemeanor, criminal offense of trespassing on school buses. Director of Transportation, Shane Stanfield, Director of Finance Operations, Ben Thomas, have reviewed WASDA's model policy and opted to leave out a section regarding transporting infants that is not applicable to our current practices, but they are recommending that, we move this forward with a first reading.
Is there any reason why we can't, um, make a motion to approve this as written?
There is, there's no reason not to. I think the, the, the reasons we've talked about in the past is opportunity for public to give public input to signal that it's.
I see.
Something that it's going, but, and, and there's no urgency.
Okay.
On it. But that is, that is one of the reasons, a kind of a.
Yeah, okay, fair.
Of the first reading, oh, I have a couple of questions, though, um, if anyone can answer. Do we know how many instances of bus trespassing or, you know, that kind of kerfuffle? Have we ever had that kind of instances?
We, we have, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if we call it trespassing then.
Do you care to expound a little bit, kind of, the, what kind of problems?
Unauthorized person coming on the bus, um, without permission to come on the bus.
Like an angry parent?
Angry parent.
Okay.
Upset, upset citizen.
Okay, gotcha. I do have, um, so this policy says, so I, I read that bill for this, and then this, uh, the cover says that we have no procedures for this policy. I just wanted to make a note that the bill does require, um, some kind of policy or procedure with the law enforcement, so just wanted to mention that. Worth mentioning as it was in the bill. And then the second thing is I have one edit only. That would be for page fifty-eight. And then if you look at that red para- the paragraph in red, underline, uh, school bus trespass. So right there at the first sentence, it is a gross, gross misdemeanor for individuals. I would like to insert there, instead of two, so the two will be struck, stroke, deleted, and we'll put who knowingly and maliciously enter or remain unlawfully. And, and the, it, should I repeat that before I explain?
Just pause it.
Okay.
See if she's got it.
I got it.
Okay. So just replacing two, to who knowingly and maliciously. And the reason for that is this, this whole, uh, paragraph, this whole thing in red that is addition, it's, it's all from the bill, and only these two words were not there. And I was like, I don't know why it's not there. I don't, it, yeah. It's kind of like a copy paste from the bill, but these two words were not there. So I just thought it's just better to be more, to have more clarity over there. So that's the only edit I would have.
Okay. So I'm gonna move on to information from board directors.
I have some information from board. Let's see. Okay. I haven't been, like, I haven't toured the library for the middle school or the high school, but I have received, um, like, a verbal communication from a parent for two books that were found with sexual graphic in the middle school for a grade six, um, kiddo, and the name of the book is Court of Thorns and Roses.
One more time, did the title?
Court of Thorns and Roses. And there's another one, Wicked, I think that's a book, I haven't researched too much about it, but Wicked, W I I C K E D. So I just wanna make sure that we are in compliance with federal law on obscenity as far as sexual graphics go for these libraries, so.
So process for, um, citizens for for challenging books is within the, in in board policy. So that would be my recommendation is would be to to have those citizens engage in that, in that, in that process. And then in terms of, you know, you know, the titles and and things, um, we'll we'll look at when the IMC approved those those books and, uh, and look at the process around that, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so even if that citizen doesn't go through that complaint process of of the materials, we still have a responsibility to make sure that we are in compliance with federal law. So I'd say it would be great if we could be proactive about it and take a look at it ourselves and just to make sure.
That's why I said, uh, we'll look at the, the title see that it went through IMC approved by the board, legal entity. And then, and then if if the board has an interest in, you know, pursuing it further, then then there's a process, there'd be a process for that.
I've had parents that have mentioned stuff to me in the past, different books, and so I've taken it upon myself as a director to go look at the books, whether it's at the school or, um, or at the library or whatever, just to, just to do my due diligence. Because people can often say things or.
Well, this is a parent that I know and that I trust.
Same with me, there's a lot of parents that I know, so that whether, I'm just saying that it's good.
The board has had the forethought for that and set up procedures, and I would really encourage to use the procedures that the board has set up. That is, that is absolutely why they're there.
Yeah, don't note it, but I think it's in the communications section or board policies.
And I've I've hosted citizens too and provided titles.
Well, I kind of want to just touch briefly on just the Wazda conference and, um, we're discussing AI tonight, and I thought it was interesting because Jeff U- Udic, is that his name?
Utech.
Utech, um, had a lot of good information just, just about what AI actually is and just kind of, kind of alleviated some of the fears around it and kind of just spoke to it as like it is a creation device, and there are ways to kind of harness and use it in the classroom as far as like, that kind of keeps it, like every language arts class has like a five, one to five category of how we're gonna use AI in this classroom for any particular, um, writing script, I don't know if you guys already see something like that, but I just, I walked away going, oh, I'm actually kind of using AI correctly. And I only didn't found out about it because of Director Van Wyk, who, you know, told me to set up an account, and that was a bad, bad idea. And, uh, the other thing is, um, like Director Barrar mentioned, um, there are bills pre-drafted that are out and we're just taking a look at and just kind of keeping your eye on them and just seeing which ones go into this next upcoming long session of a hundred and five days. And, um, Director Berberg and myself hopefully will be meeting with Representative Joe Timmons end of December to just kind of discuss some things and, um, just to kind of put it out there, if there's any sort of anything that's affecting our schools from an administrative perspective, I'd love to hear about it, just to kind of, you know. And one of the things they say is share your personal story, and of course, Sbed is always on the docket of hopefully receiving more funding, and I think we went from thirteen to fifteen percent, but there's always room for for improvement there, because, you know, there's a lot of kids that need extra, so, anyway, just good to keep your your ears open and take a look at that, prefiled bills, but yeah. I think that's all I have, do you have anything?
I do, sorry, I forgot one thing on that note of the prefiled bills. There's one to keep a really good eye on, that would be SB five zero one two, and it is to create an inter-school athletics middle path for gender separation. Um, and this is a bill that would be sponsored by Senator Phil Fortunato. This bill was also in the last session but never gained traction, so what what they call it as died. But it will be back, uh, for for this session, it's already been prefiled, so that's great. Think, uh, that is it, yeah. Oh, there's another one. This is about transportation, I should have mentioned it. Um, it's modifying the student transportation to accommodate, uh, multiple types for multiple type of vehicles for transporting students, so they're like, um, changing uh, the current RCW statute where now instead of like transporting students into buses, require a CDL, right, or kind of commercial license, they're actually going to add, um, other vehicles, any type of vehicles. Not just like zero emission vehicles or buses itself, it could be, you know, like the passenger vehicles and then with for which you don't need a commercial license for, so kind of making it easy at least on the part of transportation for districts. So that's another bill to kind of look out for, and it's just a minor change, so it might, it might pass. What else? Um, there's another one, it's called, uh, supporting you, SB five zero zero eight, supporting use of assessment, diagnostic and learning tools in public schools. This is kind of like a grant for three years or something. That OSPI will be giving out for, okay, what is this, assessment, diagnostic and learning tools. So that would be also another good one, um, to keep a, keep an eye on. That's it, sorry, I dived into.
Session begins?
Um, January thirteen.
January thirteen.
Yeah, we have one board meeting before that, I think it's on the ninth, yeah, so begins January thirteen, ends April twenty seven.
Expecting a very long and, uh, education-forward, um, session, so which should provide a lot of information.
Yeah, good stuff.
Just because I'm a lot older than you guys, it's been a good civics lesson for me as well, just to kind of pay attention to just the process and and ways that, like, I didn't know that there was a one eight hundred number that you could call just to say no or yes to a bill. And just something that they keep tallies and, um, it was like, and it was a probably pre-COVID where I was like, oh, I can actually use my voice in different ways when it comes to things that are actually happening in Olympia, so. Just throwing that out there. Stuff I wish I would have learned, maybe I did, maybe I just wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, I, so, sorry guys, so at the conference, I just, I I did want to make, there was a lot of great sessions that I went to. One of the ones that I was really struck by was it was strategic financial oversight for Washington State Schools and just really understanding what it means for schools to be in binding conditions and and just I I walked away from that really happy and grateful and also more cautious, uh, just based grateful that we're at where we are with our district's fin- finances. And very aware of the potential of of what could happen if if we don't continue the way that we have. So I think the previous boards really set us up for success and having a great director and team. So I I thought that was really, really encouraged by that, as well as a lot of, there was a lot of talk of AI, and for me, I I'm just a big proponent for AI and how do you use it well, and how do you help these kids to to leverage this tool that's not going away? And so I was, I love the 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 diagram you were talking about, the scaffolding that's, um, available on OSPI. And I'm glad to hear that that schools are using maybe something similar to to this.
Yes.
And so that's really cool, because I I had no idea, but, yeah, it was great.
All right, um, so yesterday Kyle and I had a meeting with Mr. Freeman, the principal at Linda High School. And it has brought, should I talk about the ASP funds? Um, we've, we were talking about ASP funds and how much we have to use. Big number, seventy five thousand dollars that we didn't know we could use.
And that's just for the general ASP?
For general.
That's not including clubs?
This also includes twenty six thousand dollars for our yearbook club.
Yes.
Alone, which is interesting.
Yes.
Wanna elaborate on that?
Um, yeah, something else that we talked about specifically with ASP funds was making sure that the executive officers are more aware um, of the funds, because during this meeting we also had our class president, or not our class president, our executive president.
Yeah.
For our school, um, for student body there, and she didn't know of the funds either. And so we just wanna make the treasurer specifically of the executive, as well as just the entire executive team more aware of these funds so that they know where to spend it, and when they're going into meetings, they're not going in like blind. And just, um, continuing this on with student involvement too. They want to like start doing more student-led meetings for ASP, because they meet every month with, um.
I wanna also add
Yeah, okay.
Um, we're also thinking about doing something over the summer for ASP officers, for when they're coming into office or just to stay on top of things during the summer, because usually when you go on summer vacation, you're either working a job or your brain's just out the window. So we were, at least what was brought up is monthly meeting during the summer, um, incoming ASP officers. Learn about all the ASP funds and how to really be connected with the students. As well as, if possible, having the former seniors, um, there to help voice towards the incoming seniors. And this one, it'd be just our freshmen are together, sophomores, this is all of them working together so that the upperclassmen can speak into the underclassmen on how to run the ASP, which is pretty.
Yes, and also ASP is like a huge part of our school, like all of our assemblies, like hall decorations we just did yesterday, all run by ASP, so it's super important that they're aware of their positions because you don't want them going in like not knowing what to do, because I feel like that's what happened this year. And that's where part of our funds are coming from, and they're, they're kind of lost, I feel like, at least with people that I've talked to. So this training will be really beneficial for them, at least in my opinion, so that they're more aware of their positions and how to lead at our school.
Yeah, we just want our ASP to be able to lead and be able to work with the money what we have, what money we have and know that it's there, because pretty much all of our ASP officers don't know we have this money. And it's just sitting there, and we're trying to figure out ways to use it.
Yeah.
And, um, we want to use it in a way that benefits the whole school, not just one time, like a, oh, we're having fun together. As something that will benefit us in the long run.
Yes, as well as, um, not just ASP, but as well as like clubs too, like National Honor Society and FBLA. Making them more aware of their funds too, because, like, ASP didn't know of their funds, so that can show us that, like, a lot of the clubs don't know as well.
Yeah, especially Drama Club, um, not many people knew that they actually have a lot. I, I'm not gonna give out an exact number because I'm not entirely sure, and this paper is hard to read. But Drama Club also has a significant amount of money, and they don't know about it. You wanna talk about student involvement?
Yeah, so we were trying to figure out how to get more student involvement in our school, because it's a really it's tough to do it when you're at like that age, because you can either just choose not to participate or you're really involved, there's you know, there's two separate ends. So we were talking about maybe possibly doing like a lunch in sort of thing, where Freeman will send out like a survey of people who wanna participate and get more involved in the school and spend that for, because we have two separate lunches, your first and second lunch. And have people work in those lunches and get connected with ASP officers, because we also have class officers for freshmen, sophomore, juniors and seniors. And just get more connected, um, to create more involvement and get more student voices heard.
Yeah, so Linda High School, we've been doing a lot of surveys, especially ever since COVID, to get students' voices heard. Um, this is just an about estimate number that Freeman gave me, um, we're only getting like four hundred of, four hundred, four fifty.
Out of eight fifty.
Out of eight fifty students doing these surveys. And just those numbers aren't really adding up the way we would like.
Yeah.
Um, so this lunch in, um, some ideas is we have pizza and we get everyone to collaborate together and have these conversations and we were talking about whether or not we should have adults there, because sometimes when adults are there and we're trying to have a student-led type deal go on, um, the students don't want to lead and they expect adults to do it, so.
Either that or they intervene sometimes.
Yeah, or the adults intervene either too much or whatever it is. So we were thinking about just having a few adults there if, and yet all. Just for either safety or just to keep us on track of our conversations, because, you know, when you get a group of friends together, it's not gonna stay on track.
Yeah.
Um, anything else?
I think that's really all we talked about yesterday, it was a really good meeting though.
Yeah, it was, um, we just really got into all that stuff and
Yeah.
it was good to finally get connected with Mr. Freeman.
Yes, and I think we're starting up implementing like all these ideas like in January.
Yeah, we're like, we're jumping into the deep end with this one, because if we put it on, if we put it off, it's not gonna happen.
Yes.
Knowing students. So we're gonna try to get this going as soon as possible to really get those numbers going um, and get that student involvement reaching where we want it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What, what, do they give you any idea of what the funds are ti- like, do we know what those funds are typically used for? Do you have any idea of what you can promote for the the next people that are getting involved to use, to use those funds for?
Yeah, well, it's really, I mean, like, it's really up to the officers and what they want to do with it specifically, like either help something for the school or like specific classes, like implement something in the classrooms. Or like do some sort of events, like, I don't know, like a team bonding event for the school or something, you know, there's like multiple, or there's different options that you can use them for, I mean, do you have these things?
This is why we need the students' voices, because we want to know whether we need to make we need to work on bathrooms or what do the students need.
Exactly.
Rather than what do they want, because I think everyone would want a bunch of things in the school, but what do we need? And that's why we're trying to get students together and get those voices going, so we know where to spend this money. And a lot of this money is just from previous years, a lot of it just carries over and and I'm thinking like the past at least three to five years, people didn't know about this money. There was one class, I don't remember which one, but they didn't use pretty much any of the money. So that's why we want the students' voices in this, because we wanna know what they need and whether or not the, their school experience is going well, and what can we do to make their school experience better.
Yeah, I was just, because if like, let's say someone didn't have the money to pay for something that would allow them to be included in whatever activity, you name it. They could, if they knew that this existed and they knew they're ASP officers, is that something they could potentially go to them and say, hey, I wanna participate, but, you know?
Um, well, for one thing, we have this bus that takes a bunch of kids up to Baker to go skiing and it costs a little over a hundred bucks to go, but because we have this money, um, we're making it a lot cheaper.
We're able to reduce the prices.
We're able to, not exactly free, but we're reducing the prices a lot, um, substantially.
That's just like an example.
That's one example, yeah.
It's a great example, because that's one of those things where, eh, it's, I grew up low income, and so you just remove one of those barriers, and so, that's really cool.
We want, we want our students to go and do stuff that they enjoy, and sometimes finances is a hard barrier
Yep.
to cross, and we're gonna try, what we're trying to do is use these funds to
Create more opportunities.
create more opportunities and just help our students thrive. In essence.
So if you were to not know that ASP exists. So if you were to not know that ASP existed and these funds are coming in, what is the typical amount of ASP funds that you, that ASP gets a year during school year, you know?
I'm not.
Because I'm like ninety-five grand, like, how many years would it take to make ninety-five?
That is just in the general fund, so each of those clubs follow under an ASP and they have budgets as well, and so they'll receive ASV amount to operate their clubs.
Okay.
And so then this is, as I understand it, this is the general
Yeah.
Balance that the executive officers need to maybe make some determinations on, on, on how to, how to utilize through engagement with the student body.
I, one of my, because I love, I think that's great, you guys are doing this, talking about student involvement, really. I think knowledge is power, and so the more you know, the more impact you can make. One of the things that I, and maybe you've already done this, would recommend is, is to look for some type of financial advisor, someone who could help you guys not just set yourself up for success, but thinking of the generations to come, the years and, and classes. I think that there's, there's an old saying that says that there's wisdom in a multitude of counselors. And so just to have other people speak into this, like, hey, that's a great idea, but maybe, let's hold off on that. Maybe let's put it, and it sounds to me like that's what you guys are kind of doing with looking at a needs for swan list. It's great.
Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, Mr. Freeman did send a summary of the meeting. Would, would one of you send it, do you want to send it to the?
I think you already have it.
Okay, would you like me to send it to the board?
Yeah.
I will do that. And then, and then in the notes, it says there's a meeting on the eleventh. Are you guys gonna attend?
No, because we're not a part of it.
We're not.
Yeah, you're not part of ASP.
We help the ASP, we're a part of it.
And, but so then maybe a summary from Elena that you can report back to the board?
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's great.
All right, if that's, there any more information from board directors?
Oh, he's pointing to me. Whoa, okay, fine, he pointed to me. So I just wanted to offer out there, if you guys could, you know, when you talk to ASP, I think they're the ones who do the club things, right? I've heard of this organization called Turning Point USA. And then they've got like leadership conferences, leadership summits and whatnot. So just throwing it out there, if anybody, because I heard them speak at one of the organizations that I went, so that's what they said. It just takes three students, I think, to start a chapter or something. If the school doesn't allow it, they can do it in a, in like just a city type. But yeah, just something to throw out there, it's one of the civics type of interest in a club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still think one of the coolest clubs is the Lotteria Club. One of these days, I'm gonna go visit, so.
What is it?
Lotteria, it's like Mexican bingo, but like ten times better than bingo, irrelevant to this, but.
We have a lot of clubs that.
That's awesome. Okay, well, that's it for.
You're right, we're not going to adjourn, yes. We're not going to adjourn.
Just to take a break. We just want to let everybody know, we're gonna, the board will now meet an executive session to review the performance of a public employee as allowed by RCW forty-two thirty-one ten. The board will be in executive session until nine?
I was gonna suggest.
Can I make a motion to take a
Take a break.
Five-minute break?
Yeah, let's do that first.
Until nine PM, the board does not expect to take any, any action on the executive session.